These mics are still off.
Is the light streaming?
We can wait till we get to the council maybe. Or you want, oh no, on these workshop items, give a brief update. Correct. Well, I don't think it was mine. I take mine with me, so I'm guessing the planning commissioner. Either way, I'm not drinking.
No, there's one that was.
I think I'll move.
Just so you know.
Alright, ready? Good evening, everyone. The, I call the order, the Victoria City Council Workshop for Monday, May 11th at 5:00 PM. Apologize, we did have a little administrative glitch on, the meeting was noticed for 5, but I think the WebEx said 5:30, so either way, it's being recorded, so if you miss anything, you're probably not here, but you'll be able to watch the video and catch up. So before we get going, Dana, do you want to start off with a couple of quick announcements on some of the new processes?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Welcome, everyone, and thank you for tuning into tonight's meeting. We value our residents and community members, and even though our doors are temporarily closed, to protect you all, we want to make sure anyone who wants to participate in our meetings or provide input can do so. State statutes allow the city to conduct meetings by telephone, and the council took action to allow our city council and commission meetings to temporarily take place remotely during the pandemic. So this evening, our council meetings are a little bit more informal, and this evening, we don't typically take public input during workshops, but we would currently welcome any online feedback or comments after the meeting. As you know, council may give direction, but doesn't normally take specific action during workshops. So tonight, we have two agenda items. Marty Doll, our Community and Economic Development Director, is in his office, just down the hall, ready to present to us at the first on the agenda. And then just over my left shoulder here, we have our consultant from World Architect and Engineering, who will be, or they are conducting our space needs assessment and review of that process, and sharing with you all some specific design concepts on short-term and long-term plans for converting the old public work sites to parking for the public in our downtown area. So we'll be excited to share that with you all a little bit later. But those are the announcements for us, and I'll turn it back to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Dana. So first up, we have two items tonight. Item 2.1, potential sale of vacant city-owned lots, and the second one is the space needs. So let's start with the potential sale. Marty, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Alright. So in 2019, city council directed staff to explore the potential sale of four city-owned vacant lots for future single-family homes. With the staff turnover in the community development area last summer and fall, this initiative ended up being put on hold, but we are now ready to bring that project back to the forefront, and we have a brief discussion we wanted to have with the council as we re-engage in this project and make sure we are following the proper direction. So just as a quick refresher of what we are talking about, the four lots that the city currently owns that have been talked about potentially for sale for future single-family homes. The first is at 6370 Maple Drive, as you can see on your screen. This was a platted lot of the Cray Lakes development, and it was granted to the city by the developer as a city land trust lot. Just a little background on that city land trust lot, that was something that was established by the city council back in the early 2000s to hold developable building properties for single-family homes in a land trust to be able to provide for affordable housing. The idea was that the land would be maintained by the trust, so the housing price could be lower for more median-income-type homes. Around 2011, the council at the time started disbanding that program and began selling those land trust lots. This is, I believe, the last remaining land trust lot that the city was given in the 2000s that we still own and maintain. This is the only lot of the four that we are talking about that currently does have a property tax payment annually associated with it because it is meant and always has been meant to be developed as a single-family home lot. So we've got a little bit of the information on the screen related to size, the current estimated tax value, and our current annual tax payment is $1,294. This is likely the most straightforward of the four lots we're talking about to be a potential future single-family home. The second lot is located on 81st Street and Trillium, actually Trillium Trail, yes, Trillium Trail. So this lot is a combination of two smaller lots that were originally platted in the 1940s as part of the Notermans and Plockers addition. Our city records indicate that it likely came into our possession as part of a past street and utility project. It is currently a tax-exempt property. It does include a neighboring property owner's existing driveway or a portion of it. It's hard to see in this map I'm showing because we read it out, the lot, but there is a section of driveway that comes in here, so there's likely some easements that would need to be obtained if the city looked to sell this lot. It would also likely need sewer and water stubbed into the lot from the street. There is nearby sewer and water. Again, from staff's overview, this one seems to likely be the second most feasible as a residential building lot in an existing neighborhood of homes with relative ease to sewer and water.
Marty?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Can you point where the, where the neighbor, where the lot or the driveway is on that?
Yeah, so I believe that comes in, and again, it's hard for me to tell because I read it this out, but I believe it comes in at a portion over here. It's not the full driveway. If you give me just a moment here, I can pull up a map and we can look at it. So give me one second here, bear with me. So are you all seeing the map right now?
Yes.
Yep.
So this driveway comes up through the western corner of that lot in question, and comes up this way, and it's actually to this property to the northwest.
There's a lot of trees there.
Yes.
I have a question. Did anyone ask them if they wanted the property?
Sorry, what was that?
Did anyone ask them if they wanted to purchase that property?
So council member black, mayor, members of the council, I think one of staff's proposals, if we do decide to explore this, is that we would intend to reach out to the neighbors of all of these property within 350 feet to gather feedback. So at that time, I think that would be if there, if there is any interest by any of the other property owners, we'd be looking for their feedback on whether or not they are supportive of selling these lots, what they would propose the city do with those lots. So I have not spoken to those property owners yet, but that would be part of this process if the council chooses to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Marty, Councilmember Gregory here.
Yes.
If we were to sell this, could we restrict that the driveway would have to come off a trillium as opposed to 81st Street?
I am not sure on what our ability would be to dictate the movement of that driveway. Again, I think it would depend, and we'd have to do a little bit of digging of what current easements are already existing. I don't know if Bob, if Attorney Vols is on the line, if he would, he would have any input on what the city could or couldn't do related to actually moving that driveway?
I don't think he's talking about moving the driveway. I think he's talking about the new owner. The new owner?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're talking about the new lot?
Right, the lot that we're selling.
Yeah, yes, yes. And in fact, I think that would be the preferred access from the city. I'm sorry, I thought you were referring to the existing driveway going through the property. But yes, the city could through its sale, I believe, dictate where, where we wanted that entrance to be, and I think the city's preferred location would be off a trillium.
Okay.
And Mayor and council, I agree with that.
Yep, hey Bob, this is the mayor. The, would the new owner, just so that we can be clear, would the new owner be forced basically to give a easement for the existing driveway since it's already there because you can't block access to the property? Or would the, would the driveway have to be moved? My assumption is the new owner would have to grant an easement. Is that accurate?
Yeah, so Mayor and council, I think it would be in the city's interest probably to address that as part of any sale. In other words, as seller, the city would establish the easement necessary for access to any other lot over the city's property. So I think the city can address that as part of a transaction that we're talking about here.
Got it. The property immediately north of that, it looks like the driveway goes through that property also. So how did this evolve this way? Anybody have any idea?
Mayor, members of the council, I do not know that far back into the history of this property. Again, as I mentioned, I think we'd have to, we'd have to do a little bit of digging to see what, if any, easements we have access to or show that in that property. This is, this is, again, these were originally platted back in the 1940s, so it is an older neighborhood.
Well, don't you recall doing that, Marty?
I do not, I'm sorry.
Alright, thank you.
You bet. Any additional questions on this property? And I'm sorry, if I'm, if I'm moving too fast, just feel free to do as you're doing and stop and slow me down.
Okay.
The third property that we're talking about is 8420 County Road 11 off of Victoria Drive. So this is the location of the former city water tower near the Deer Run Golf Course to the south. There is many of you, if you drive through there, you're familiar with the Century Link building that is on this parcel right here directly to the south. This is an outlot from that Deer Run development, as it initially had city facilities on it. The tower has been razed, but the footings and foundations are still on site, which can create some challenges. And also, there is no sewer currently available at this location, so there'd be quite a bit of extension that would need to be done to get sewer to this location as a single-family home. And then we'd also need to work with the county on access into this property off of County Road 11. There is a, an existing, I believe it is a shared access between this, where the water tower used to be, and the Century Link building. So this, this site does prove to be a little more difficult when it comes to creating a single-family home environment, but there are potentially some other options if we were to, to move forward and explore sale of these properties from the adjoining golf course or townhome. Those would all be options we would explore. Any questions on this lot?
Question. This is Councilor Voe. Have a question, Marty?
Yes.
Question is, the foundations that are in there are pretty extensive. What's, I mean, we're trying to sell this. Is the city going to rip out the foundations, or is, is the new owner expected to bear this as part of the cost?
I think that's all part of the questions that we would, we would need to address as the challenges with this lot, if it, if it truly is a viable location for, for home building. Kara, are you on the line? Do you have any additional insight on that? Is Kara on?
I don't see her.
Okay.
I do, I think you have a question as well. This is Judy. That property not having sewer and water, having the stubs in there and all that fun stuff, and it being right off of 11, I'm just looking at the townhomes that are there. If we kept that and we ran a trail over to 11, that would, that would answer their problem being able to get downtown because of, you know, we're not going to be doing that Trishley Grove sidewalk this year. That would take care of that.
Is there a trail on that side of 11?
No, it wouldn't take care of it. There's no trail there. It's, it's just a golf course. They, you'd have to put a trail in front of those two, two or three houses that are there on the corner, and that would be just as invasive as the other way.
They could cross the street. There's a trail across the street.
There's no crossing there.
Yeah, there's no crosswalk.
No, who is it that?
Right. Councilmember Gregory, you had a, you had a question?
The idea that there's foundations there, since there was a water tower there, the foundations have to be like a bunker. I mean, they have to be deep and big. I mean, are we talking about some kind of monumental thing here?
Councilmember Voe, mayor member of the council, I do not know the, the depths or the extent of that foundation. That would be something we'd have to get more information on.
Or we could just sell it as is and let the new owner decide whether or not they want to do anything with it. We could work with them on easements, but councilmember Voe, any more questions? Otherwise, councilmember Gregory had a question.
No, thank you. Okay.
Yep. Councilmember Gregory, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. No, I did not have any questions, so.
Alright. Yep, Deb, go ahead.
Marty, is this currently guided residential?
Yes, it is. Yes, all, all four of these sites are currently guided residential.
So one, one other question. It looks, if I'm looking at this correctly, it looks like there's a joint access. So the question about access to County Road 11, is it already shared with Century, Century Link owns that building just south?
Yes, Century Link owns this building straight south, and, and there is a shared access point. I don't know if the access on the city property side would be wide enough to be considered a full access into a property, but there is, there's currently a shared access into that site. You can see the edge of the pavement on this slide here, and that does come into the property.
So I'm, I'm guessing unless the council objects, we'd want to know, we'd want staff to look at this to determine whether or not Century Link will grant an access. I think the county, if it's already there, then, then we extend it to this site, just like we have questions about the easement for the very first property too. So we should probably get answers to those questions. Council, any objections? No. Council on the phone, any objections?
No objections.
Alright.
No.
Thank you. Marty, next one?
Yep, thank you.
Was there anything else on this one, or is that it?
Alright, I will, I will move on. The four, the fourth lot that we're talking about is 6735 Smith Town Road. So this lot was a public use exception in the South Lake, Virginia shores development. It was the location of the former, city's former well number one, which is currently sealed. The property, as you can see on the map, is bordering parkland on two sides. So it is just this small red parcel here, and then the surrounding property is also city-owned and is part of the park in this area. So this is the smallest of the four lots. The city received this as a tax forfeiture property with provisions originally in the deed for park use only. So I do, I do stand somewhat corrected, Councilmember McMillan. This is technically, this parcel is, it's within a residential guided zone, but this parcel itself is currently guided as park and open space. It is within a residential district, but that parcel is guided as park and open space in the 2040 comprehensive plan. So there would be some regiding of this specific parcel, and it would likely need in order to be buildable, and I believe this was part of the discussion previously, that there would need to be some sort of lot extension, that this lot would potentially need to take a piece of this parkland as well in order to become a viable and buildable lot.
Is there water and sewer available in that area?
There, there is, I believe there is water and sewer available in this area.
Is there any, is it just simply trees there? It doesn't look like it's, it's
No, it is, it is, it's, it's very wooded. You can kind of see where the tree line goes. That tree line extends up into the boulevard area, but it is currently just wooded.
So did I hear you say that this is deeded for park only?
Yes.
So are we even able to sell this for, for, for a house, assuming they extend it?
Based on my research of what was discussed previously when this was first brought up, is that there is a potential, if the Parks and Recreation Committee provides a recommendation that they don't believe it is needed for future park, that the city council could change that designation. But again, it was, it was originally deeded with the intent that it, it should remain parkland. But there, there is an ability for the, the city council to change that designation, from my understanding.
So there's a tennis court there. There's, isn't there a, a city pump house here on the, on the kind of the western edge of that property? The, is there any parks within that neighborhood area?
I don't see any.
No.
Any, any playgrounds?
Yeah, any playgrounds or anything? Looks like, what, is that, is that a tennis court?
Yes.
It was a tennis court. That was just built a few years ago.
So let's take a quick consensus from the council. We'll start with the folks on the phone. I'm curious as to the council, whether or not they think we should just leave this, because if there's no park up in that area, putting another house in, is that the best use, or do we just keep it as an open park? So councilmember Voe, why don't we start with you on the phone? Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, a couple thoughts. First of all, is the rest of the wooded area in that whole sector that designated parkland?
Yes, yes. This entire parcel surrounding it is park.
Okay, so you have the makings of a nice park if the city would ever develop it, which is a real question, is why we've not done anything with it? Because it's, it's wooded, is it hilly, or how does, what's the topography?
I am not sure on the exact topography of that area.
So my opinion would be...
Councilmember Voe?
Yes.
It's my understanding, this is a pretty high hill, that's, that's very wooded. When we had this discussion on Park and Rec last year, I believe, there was some concerns about people storing boats and things like that out there. So I think it's, that's one of the issues, but it, it, it doesn't, it doesn't tie in well with the tennis court area, because this is a pretty, pretty drastic hill there. So it's, it's, it would be difficult to put a house there, it'd be difficult to make into a park.
Oh, so the... Yeah.
Councilmember Gregory, is it, has there been any discussion in the Park and Rec Committee to do any kind of improvements to that parkland, other than the, the tennis court that sits there?
I don't believe so. I don't, I don't think there was any discussion about expanding into a, like a tot playground or anything like that, that, that just didn't come up. And again, and again, I stress that the, the topography does not lend itself well to that type of a park. Maybe more of a, a nature-type park, but not so much of a playground-type park.
Do we, do we know how big that whole parcel is? How big that whole park is?
So the small section is .2 acre. I can pull up a map again. We should be able to see what the full... So we're looking at 2.10 for the park parcel, and then another .2 acres for this small square in the corner. So 2.3 acres total.
Council, we have a, a number of Park and Rec meetings have been canceled, but we have one a week from tonight. How about if we put this on the agenda for the Park and Rec, take a look at it, and come back with some options for the council, and just put this property on hold until we get that?
I would agree.
Yeah, this is Judy, and I, I agree with that, because I think finding a way to keep that a park would be ideal, to be perfectly honest. According to Councilmember Gregory, it would be very difficult to build there anyway, so maybe we could find some sort of a public use other than storing boats.
Alright, councilmember Voe, any objections?
I think it's a good idea. I think the city should look at doing something with it. Even if there's a hill there, they can make it into some kind of nature area. You know, just to have the land sitting there and doing nothing, it doesn't do any good for anybody.
Depending on the hill, then maybe could, they could sled on it or something.
That was a, Judy, that was, that was a recommendation a few years ago, and nothing ever came of it, but it did, there was a recommendation to put a sliding hill there.
Well, that would be great. We don't have that.
Alright, Deb?
Yeah, I'm actually thinking we should take a look at what the feasibility of building, to increase that a little bit and see if it would be, we could, what it would take to turn that into a buildable lot. That is a beautiful property, and it is in a neighborhood, so a home would not look out of place there. I mean, if it's, if it's, it seems to be a pretty prime piece of property that might net us some, some money, and it would still leave us plenty of room to put a park there. So I'd kind of be curious to know what the feasibility of making a buildable lot out of, you know, that would be equivalent to some of the other properties. I don't know, kind of looking at some of these other properties, they're looking pretty significant, but I'm wondering if we could get a buildable lot out of that and still have a really nice park area there. It's pretty significant, two, over two acres, two and a half almost.
Alright. It, it doesn't sound like there's any objections, so I'll bring this up at the Park and Rec Committee a week from tonight, is when we're meeting. So, and I'll raise a number of these issues. Marty, are you on that committee with me?
On Parks and Rec? No, that would be...
Can we get a note to Ann? Oh, perfect. Alright. So council, we'll go ahead and take some of the discussions here tonight, pass that on, and ask the Park and Rec Committee to look at various options, both housing, sledding, expanding green space, and try to see what they can come up with. Nature preserve, alright. The, so we'll come back to that one. So that was the last property, Marty, is that correct?
Yes, that's the last property. So again, those were the four properties that were in consideration when this was first brought up a year ago. At that time, council had provided some direction to staff to move forward with some more in-depth exploration of those sales. Staff at this time, assuming the council is still in favor of looking at some or all of those properties for sale, would be looking at doing a similar property. Our proposal or our recommendations was, again, to remove that lot at 6735 Smith Town Road from the properties to explore for sale. So that was part of the council discussion, just to get clear direction on whether or not you'd like us to include that or not include it. And then we are also proposing conducting an RFP to hire a realtor or broker that would be able to then assist and market that property. We would like to go with an RFP process to try and, A, create a competitive process to get the best situation for the city, keeping an open and fair process. As I know, we have a lot of realtors in the area who would potentially be interested in doing this. And we have, we've, we've actually started, just in anticipation, putting together a draft RFP. I think our intention would be to score those that are working solely commission-based or primarily commission-based as a higher priority than those that would be looking for an upfront fee to assist in the sales of these properties. So that, those are the two pieces we're looking for direction on.
So let me, let me summarize what, first, before we do that, council, any objections to staff issuing an RFP to get... to get proposals for selling these lots, whichever lots we end up deciding, uh, to sell? Uh, first, council member vote, any objections?
No.
Uh, council member.
No objections.
All right, thank you.
No objections.
Thank you.
No objections.
Um, no, but I would like, I would like them to check with the, um, adjacent property, property owners for first rights before they did that.
Right. If we sell them, I think we put it out for everybody to look at, including the adjacent property owners. It has to go to everybody, not just the next door neighbors.
Yes, and here, I, I, I can actually, I can just bump to this slide too, which would be a proposed timeline. We would intend to reach out, um, notice this, um, specifically to those, um, nearby neighbors, collect that feedback and then bring any feedback back to the council in June if necessary before actually issuing that RFP. That would be our intention with this proposal.
Uh, thank you, Deb. Any objections?
No objections.
Okay. So Marty, I think summarizing what I heard the council say, we want to get, uh, information on the, uh, right of ways for those two lots. Um, and then the, the lot on Smithtown Bay, we're going to take that to the Park and Rec and let them come back with some recommendations. We may or may not sell that one. Um, but after we, on the first three properties, once we have the information related to the two, uh, right of ways, um, uh, at that point, we'll be able to actually pull the trigger and say, yeah, let's sell these three lots. Maybe and maybe not, we'll have the information we need on the Smithtown, uh, Bay lot. Council, is that accurate summary?
Yes.
Sounds good. Uh, Deb and I are in agreement. Judy, you, you're in agreement. Council member vote, would you agree?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Council member Gregory?
Agreed.
Okay, uh, it's unanimous then. So, um, Marty, you have everything you need from us?
Mayor, members of the council, just one more piece of clarification. We would like to start reaching out to neighbors, uh, sooner rather than later to keep this timeline in place. Would you like us to include the Smithtown Road, uh, property as part of that initial request for feedback?
Unless the council objects, I think we should say we're considering it, but the decision hasn't been made.
Yes.
That way we can get feedback. Council, right? Any objections?
Agreed.
Okay, uh, I'm Gregory. Any objections?
Sounds good, sounds good.
Okay. Marty?
I have everything I need.
All right, thank you. I think that wraps up two dot one. Any final comments? Uh, hearing none, let's move on to two dot two. Um, go ahead.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm just gonna do a quick presentation here with Wald, uh, Architecture and Engineering Firm.
Oh, I, probably, we know where you are, but you need to probably, for the people on the phone, please introduce yourself.
Dave Shogren, Public Works Director.
Thank you.
Um, just gonna introduce quick, uh, John McComara and Melissa Stein from Wald Architecture and Engineering. Um, they're the company that we have contracted with to do our space needs assessment. So they've got a presentation for you this evening to talk about where we are and where we're going.
Perfect. Uh, welcome, John. Name and, uh, position for the record, please.
Uh, John McComara, Wald Architecture Engineers. I'm partner in charge for, uh, the project. And so tonight we have a two-part, uh, presentation for council. The first part is really just kind of talk through our process for doing a space needs assessment, which is the process that we're in right now. Um, our overall process would be to kind of look at, uh, doing some, uh, core planning and stakeholder meetings. We're gonna be doing some surveys and departmental interviews. And we'll be taking a look at the existing facilities, obviously those are resources the city has and we want to make sure, uh, related to their ability to be able to expand and, and modify based on recommendations. Uh, and then start to put together some, uh, reports for staff and for council. So as we look at our overall, uh, plan for the project, really we are in that first kind of organizational, uh, right now, we have met, we've had a, uh, two core planning meetings, really kind of talked about goals and objectives for the project, really to talk about where we want to, uh, ultimately be with our final report. Uh, we're starting the survey and utilization piece of it right now. And the remaining steps really will be looking at analyzing current and future requirements, looking at the existing buildings, as I talked about, developing recommendations around square footage and, uh, need for the future, start looking at some options and then look to staff and council for rules of those recommendations. Uh, overall, our process is gonna take, you know, a three-pronged approach to this, really looking at kind of facts, looking at the resources that you have, uh, putting together some criteria and my associate Melissa will talk a little bit about that at night. Coming through, uh, putting together again those options and, uh, putting together an overall final plan for the city.
Uh, thank you.
Hi, everyone. Melissa Stein, Wald Architecture Engineers. I am the project manager for the project. So like John said, um, one of the first steps that we do is creating kind of a core planning group. So this is really a, a group of individuals who we, um, as we go through the process, really want to have them be the people that are our filter. They're the people that are really gonna help create, um, what we call the guiding principles and really look at the options. Give us a global look at what the city Victoria have, what the visions are and really make sure that as we move forward, they're keeping everything kind of in mind. Um, how we do that is we, um, they are comprised of all different departments within the city. Um, so as we look at that global approach of, of the city, um, the biggest piece of theirs is to really figure out agreement of the need and to really get consensus on as we move forward. It is one of the most critical pieces is as we go forward that they really are, um, in consent with how everything's moving forward and that they agree with everything. Um, they're not, we understand this is a process and for that we want to make sure that we look at a global approach from all different input givers. And so as we get, um, John had mentioned surveys, as we get other information from different users, uh, community members, we filter all that through this core planning group so that we can make decisions, um, correctly. Um, one of our first starting pieces is the project goal. Um, and so one of the main things that we want to achieve are, uh, identify current facility conditions and efficiency, city population and growth projections, future facility needs, uh, space needs, um, order of magnitude of cost estimates to achieve future needs, uh, preliminary, um, site design layout, potential funding sources and or strategy, potential improvement of existing buildings and maximize operational efficiencies and investments, and then timeline. So these are our main project goals. How we plan to achieve those is in our core planning group on the kickoff meeting, we kind of went through, we discussed what the needs for all the different departments were. And from there we created our guiding principles. So these guiding principles are really critical. They're actually gonna be what we base all of our projects and options and as we move forward is what we're gonna base everything off of. There's the, I would say the overarching theme of the things that we want to achieve. And so we've, um, indicated four different main criteria, focused on function, operations, sustainability, community pride, and then financial resilience. So for focus on the functional operations, uh, each facility solution should accommodate the long-term needs of the department and encourage efficiency, interaction, and collaboration. Solution needs to be adaptable for future, uh, future changes in operations or growth. The facility should strive to be safe for staff, but also be open and publicly welcoming. For sustainability, plan for common sense, sustainable approaches for building and operations. Plan for building improvements and preserve existing investments in facilities. Community pride, plan for vibrant downtown as a focus for the community with adequate parking to support special events and access to trails and parks. For financial resilience, each facility solution should achieve the best functional layout for each department and support community growth over time. Recommendations should reflect today's immediate needs and support future growth without starting over. And then investment should reflect the community's values and be fully responsible. Like John said, we did have our first kickoff meeting in April. We have started the survey process. And so there's two different surveys that we send out, one to all staff to understand the environmental needs and their working environment. Um, the other one is departmental needs. Um, and so those go to the department heads and really start talking about how the department's functioning today and how do they perceive themselves functioning in five, 10, 15, 20 years. Um, and start thinking about growth. Sometimes growth isn't necessarily numbers, but demographics and just how there's the changing of environment and technology. Um, all of those things, um, get indicated in those surveys. And then we had department meetings and discuss a little more in depth on those. And from there we start to have more, um, meetings with the core planning group, create concepts, and then come back to you guys with some, some feedback, um, understand what, make sure we're all in alignment, um, between the council and our core planning group meetings. And then hopefully have council improvements, uh, in July.
Was that mayor, council, if there's any questions kind of on process? We take a pause here and answer any questions?
Uh, all right, thank you. The, let's start with the folks on the phone. Uh, uh, we'll start off with, uh, council member Black. Uh, any questions or comments at this point?
Um, no, I'm just waiting to see the results. It's nice to see how everything laid out, but I'm waiting for some answers.
Okay, thank you. Council member Gregory?
No questions.
Uh, thank you. Council member vote?
Couple of questions, comments, uh, at the, uh, from thirty thousand feet, it looks like we have facility problems already. City Hall is, uh, pretty tight. And, uh, Public Works is almost saturated. Uh, we have a culture in this city of, uh, bucking up and being creative and saying we can make do. So I'm hoping that we don't do this to ourselves again where we build something 10 years later than it should be built. That this, this is very objective and we come up with a product that looks like we're going to, uh, expand the city as needed in a, in a financially responsible way. So no questions, just comments.
All right, thank you. Uh, Deb?
Uh, just one quick question. When you look at long-term, what do you define as long-term? Is that 20 years, 50 years? What do you, where's the timeline on that?
What we find is that most fit, uh, groups can plan at least about 20 years. Most of our solutions will want to at least take into consideration what, uh, demographics and population is going to look like in that time horizon. And most groups that do look at projections really that 20-year time horizon where you can get the best information. And it's a lot of times hard strategically to think, you know, what things are gonna happen. But one of the things that we do, um, quote our clients on is to make sure that any solutions have the ability to adapt to change. And one of the core guiding principles that we talked about was to be able to, you know, adapt to change. I don't think any of us six months ago thought we would be doing meetings remotely. And so I think a lot of that is gonna have an influence on, on buildings and how it will look over time.
Uh, the, my assumption is, is it, this is gonna take in, uh, you're aware of the extra space on top of the, uh, water treatment plant that's not been used?
Uh, mayor, that's correct. We did cover that space and then we won't be engaging in conversation with our department.
Along with the old Public Works site?
Yes.
All right, perfect. That's all I, uh, uh, that's the only comments I had.
Well, mayor, that's a perfect segue into the second part of our agenda, which is really to talk about downtown site. Uh, one of the things that, um, city manager asked us to do in, uh, the Public Works Department, it was true. At, um, this downtown facility, I know it's been something that's been talked about, uh, at different council sessions and stuff like that. And so we kind of broke that out as kind of a separate conversation. And so the site that we're talking about tonight is really obviously the old Public Works building that is really now currently being used.
Old storage facility.
We had a chance to tour it briefly. Briefly in the site and certainly, uh, it's a great location there. The building has been, uh, better dated. It's, uh, in, or conditioned to, uh, to be politically correct with it. Um, certainly the reason for going away from it was valid with some of the issues that, uh, they had in the building. And, um, certainly from a size perspective, it doesn't currently meet the needs, uh, for the city. Uh, there are some features on the site with the brush drop-off and some storage things there that I think are interesting things that we want to consider as we move forward with ideas around it. I had an opportunity to meet with Dave on the main questions, what do we need to have in the downtown area to service the downtown, not, you know, looking at globally beyond the downtown area, what types of equipment might we need in this area? There are some things that are stored in there right now that, that, you know, potentially could be stored elsewhere. So let's get it down to what exactly is our needs for the downtown area. And so we came up with a program. Uh, we talked about needing to have the skid steer in there. It's a piece of equipment that, uh, used all year round, has different implements and attachments to it. And it, it really is an important piece to have in that area. So that's one of the bigger pieces of equipment that we want to store in that area. Uh, there is a couple of mowers in there, a larger zero-turn mower and some hand push mowers that should stay in that area. Uh, there's a utility vehicle, a small UTV that, uh, would like to have some space in that building. So not a significant amount, probably roughly about 500 square feet of space if you look at those things. Uh, there's some need for some general storage in the building or, um, some fuel, uh, that needs to be stored in there. Looking at some ladders and miscellaneous storage or event storage and some of the things that really support the downtown. Uh, give us a, a, a net program, you know, a little over 600 square feet and you build in some circulation. So a modest sized building, I'm right around, you know, a thousand plus square feet would do the job. The existing building is roughly 8,000 square feet. Give a sense of scale of what we're looking at there. We looked at, we understand that obviously that's an important site, especially as we look at events, certainly events. Uh, this summer might be different than on other, uh, summers, but, um, we know that there's, uh, uh, potentially a need for some additional parking to support the downtown area. So one of the things we look at is what could you do today and what could you be thinking about long-term? Uh, the Public Works Department has been doing some cleanup on the site right now. So a lot of those things are already occurring on there. But if we look at at least on the short term, let's not take the building down. Uh, it's a fairly invasive project. To take that building out and certainly would have an impact on usage of that site for summer time. But is there a way that you could add some additional parking, either just by doing it informally with some class five, which is what's being done right now? Or could we take, and just anecdotally, just looking at layout and flow through the site, you could probably get around, you know, 20 plus cars in there. But it's an awkward site with the existing building located where it is and with the, uh, garage that's in there and the yard waste. But there is obviously some benefit to add some parking, you know, additional parking in that area. So at least we would get some of that. And then another thing that we spent some time talking about was just general weight binding and making sure that people understand its usage. It's kind of tucked up back there. I know that, uh, Public Works is doing some cleanup on some of the landscaping around there to make it a little more visible. But putting some sort of monumentation or directional signage down at the entry to the site would be beneficial. The current site of the site is tucked back, uh, you know, past the trail and it's, you really hardly can see it from the road. But one of the things that I wanted to talk a little bit about is some initial investment in that site might be some landscaping, uh, doing some, just some class five parking in there, doing some signage. So with a minimal investment, uh, right off the shoot, uh, maybe 25,000 would be a good place to, you know, put an allowance in there for it and would get you at least through kind of this initial phase. I think over investing in paving and some of the other, uh, building type stuff, uh, might be premature until you have some conversation around, you know, what disposition of, uh, the rest of the site do we want to be doing. So we took, we took a look at long-term, how could you maximize the site for parking? You know, if that's one of the criteria is adding some additional parking. Uh, we could get, you know, a parking lot up there that would be right around, you know, 50 stalls if we could build out the whole area. Now, there are some caveats to that. One, we haven't really done a survey of the site, so there's a fairly, you know, deep slope on the backside that, uh, as we get closer and closer to it, we want to make sure that we have good retention in that area. Um, what do we want to do with just, uh, storage and access for yard waste? Uh, we also know that this site has some environmental issues with it. So, uh, building on it as far as parking goes is probably okay, but if you're gonna do some more significant changes to it, it's gonna require some environmental assessments and that type of stuff, uh, to do a more invasive project there. So our, our one solution was let's get the storage building out of the way to maximize the area out in front where it's more visible for public parking. Let's try to tuck the yard waste area into what's now just a, you know, a site storage area. So it's kind of out of the way, uh, circulation area. So people would circulate through the site, uh, be able to either access the parking area or access the yard waste area, uh, and circulate back out. And again, some level of site monumentation, uh, would be appropriate either on the short term or in the long term. So one of the things that we have anticipated here is obviously we're near a lake there. So there's going to be some watershed requirements. Uh, so we have put an allowance in our budget for some, uh, subsurface, uh, storage and retention, uh, in that area. Uh, we would want to meet with the watershed to talk to see what the requirements could be for that. Uh, this would include some landscaping, demolition of the existing building and then construction of a roughly a thousand square foot building on the site. So sizable investments, total project. So sizable investments, total project cost would be about a half million dollars. So that includes construction and then all top costs that would go into like any environmental reports, you know, peeing testing.
We have a lot of land that's north of this, is that the right direction, north of this? As part of this, are you going to look into, I imagine it's probably cost prohibitive, but putting some sort of a retaining wall to give us a larger surface space for potentially more parking? Or is that really going to just make it cost prohibitive? Because I know that's steep back there, but.
It drops off really quickly back in that area. I could certainly look at what it would take, but the amount of fill that would be necessary would be sizable for.
Probably not cost effective.
I mean, a surface lot, the more you can just develop a surface lot, it's going to be your, your best investment as soon as you start to. We're roughly at about five thousand to fifty-five hundred dollars per parking spot. So you start to add in retaining walls and still in there, that number's going to go up pretty rapidly to the point where.
So the other question, the, you have landscaping both on the temporary and the long-term? I mean, this is in, it's all woods. What, why would we put landscaping? Wouldn't that just add to the cost?
It's more just to take care of some of the overgrowth that's in that area.
To kind of clean that up, if you will?
Yeah, make it more visible from the road and maybe clean up the stuff that's along the trail there.
All right, so it's more aesthetics to get rid of the scrub, the buckthorn, whatever it is in there? Got it, all right. Council, on the phone, Councilmember Gregory, do you want to go first? Any questions or comments here at this point?
Sure. You had mentioned that initially if we put in, say, twenty-five thousand dollars worth of improvements, mostly class five, we could, we could start to utilize it. Did that include widening the driveway? Because right now there's only room for one car to get through at a time.
That's a good question. We hadn't given it a significant amount of thought at this point in time just because of the current flow to the site is pretty, pretty low. But it would be certainly be something to take into consideration and then we could study that and see if that adds, what that would add to it. Most of the work that we're suggesting in the short-term would be work that your Public Works Department could handle most of that on their own.
Okay, one other question. You talked about when we do demolish the old building, it's eight thousand square feet and then possibly erect maybe a thousand square foot building. Would we be looking at the same environmental type of restraints if we were to make that, that kind of an improvement? Because they're, you know, I get that, that we, we can build a parking lot without having to go through, jump through too many hoops. But if we start improving it too much, we're going to have to possibly start to mitigate some of the environmental concerns.
I think with any sort of, you know, hard skate that we're going to be putting in there is going to probably require some level of environment. On that site, if you were to put in a drainage feature to satisfy the watershed, it will require some excavation below the current surface of the parking lot, which would then trigger some environmental investigation. I would recommend that council consider doing that regardless so that you know the magnitude of what might need to be done or what can be done.
Okay, thank you.
So what about, I'll, I'll come back to this. Councilmember Black, questions, comments?
No, I actually like the idea. I think the driveway does do one car going in and one car, I think it's wide enough, the two cars, one in and one out. When I was there in the fall, I had them doing that. So I'm not sure what the requirements are, but I do know that I had cars coming in and out at the same time.
And this is not going to be heavily traffic, like a connector road, so.
Yeah.
Anything else, Judy?
Um, no, I, I like the idea. The cold storage, I don't think we have to, if we're just doing cold storage and people aren't staying in there, I don't think we have to worry about remediating the land, do we? Is that what you were talking about? Councilmember Gregory?
Yeah, that was my, that was my concern. I, I think most of us know what used to be there and there are definitely some environmental concerns. And if we start doing too many improvements, I don't want to get into a situation where we're going to be required to excavate the whole thing out and get rid of all the possible dump that's there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think with just, if we're just doing cold storage, I don't think we have to do that, right? Am I correct with that?
I don't know, that was my question.
I'm talking to.
I'll ask him for you. I, I think what they're getting at is if we're just putting a thousand square foot cold storage building there, do we really have to do excavation? Or is this all tied into the runoff because it's paved?
Mayor and Council, it's mostly related to the pay, any time that we're going to have to deal with the watershed in there. And so if we're going to having to put in some sort of subsurface structure to manage, because we're adding more impervious surface there, which will then trigger the watershed. And if we have to put in a drainage feature that goes below the current site itself, we're going to be excavating there. And without knowing what the level of contaminants are there, I would rather be conservative at this point and advise that there would be some remediation that would be necessary.
So on the assumption, based on that, if we just made this entire thing gravel, class five, other than the pad for the thousand square foot building, there is no need for, because that's a, that's not an impervious surface, correct?
I would have to double check, but class five I believe is qualified as a, as a impervious surface.
Right.
I believe that is, I, I would have to find that out for sure. I can certainly get that answered.
Just food for thought. Councilmember Vogt, questions, comments?
Couple, couple comments on a driveway. If we do need to widen the driveway, which is possible, there's somebody we've got to get that, is it the park reserve or who owns the trail? So there'll be somebody else involved approving anything we want to do with the driveway. So if we could live with the existing driveway, it would, it would save time. Long-term solution? So that's my first comment. Second comment is long-term solution. I'm curious as to how much of the five hundred thousand is demolition?
Very little of it. It's a fairly simple old bar building to take down.
Okay, so what's the reason we're not doing it right away?
I think, I think Dave wants, he still has the cold storage requirement for equipment. So we take the building down, where's the equipment go in the intro? Dave, is that?
Is that the reason, Dave?
Yeah, he, Dave shaking his head yes.
Funding.
Okay.
And Dana's saying also funding because the council hasn't set aside funds for this yet.
Okay, well, the plan, the plan looks good. The sooner the better, we need the parking.
Agreed. Any other comments? Deb?
Question regarding, we know that's a contaminated site. Does any of the five hundred take into effect any remediation on that? Or is it simply, we think we're going to be fine, we're going to pave over it? None of that is included in that estimate?
Mayor and Council, the bigger number that we have in there does have allowance in there for some amount of soil correction related to putting in a subsurface drainage feature. I would still say we, we need to do some investigation, you know, we're pretty early in this. If the consensus of the council is to move forward this as a long-term plan, my advice of City Manager and the Public Works Director would be to put some money aside to do a survey and do environmental, do some soil borings on the sites to what we're working with.
Be in favor of understanding what's there as well.
Couple of quick comments. The, for the temporary site, you know, based on your description of what you mean by the landscaping, that's kind of clean it up, I would agree. But for the short-term solution, I wouldn't put any money into it because of the fact that this is a short-term solution. Same thing goes with the sign. The, I agree that the final solution should have the sign and the landscaping. But for now, we're just going to get parking in there with gravel until we have time to decide what the final is. The other thing is, I'm kind of curious, I really don't want to open up this dump, right? The, and, and that could be a huge can of worms that we just don't want. The problem is, is then you've got maintenance of gravel and it'd be much cleaner and aesthetically much better to have paved. But I'd like to try to get as much information as possible as to whether or not we're opening up a big can of worms, having to dig into that. So if it's soil boring, so fine, so be it. I want to try to maximize though, wherever possible, where we get hard surface for parking, to extend parking. And then on the second drawing, and also you've got yard waste, it looks like it's going over the lot line there, assuming that those, those white lines are the lot line. Was that by design or is that an accident?
Uh, Mayor, that is by design. I believe that there's some conversations going on with the adjacent trail owner to see if that area would be, it's currently that way there now. So unless for some reason they want to restore that area, that's currently a lay-down area right now.
So it's kind of like we've been using that and now let's do it right?
That's correct, Mayor.
Got it, all right. So those discussions will continue. The, my assumption is, depending on how that ends up, my assumption is if we wanted to do yard waste, we could still put those roll-on, roll-offs anywhere in there anyways. They wouldn't have to be there, correct? And we could just, when we're doing this, take a few parking spots necessary, all right?
Yes, that would certainly be the back.
All right, unless there's objections from council, let's continue.
Continue.
All right, please proceed.
I do have one quick question. So short-term means this year, this is the plan we want to start as early as next year, correct? The long-term plan or no?
Council's decision on that, we'd be happy to start on it anytime.
Thank you for being so accommodating.
Dana?
Mayor, members of the council, what we could do, if, if you like what you're seeing, what we could do is certainly include a long-term discussion in the CIP and as part of the budget discussion, which will be coming up here in June, on the twenty-second will be our first conversation. So we can run some preliminary numbers and, and see what that does to the budget for that.
So does the short-term cost, the twenty-five thousand, does that include any soil boring?
I anticipated that we would need to do some survey work and some of that type of stuff. So yes, most of the other costs, as we said, has already been by Public Works Department. I'm not sure how that's all being paid for, but, and then we had a small allowance in there for a site sign on there to be able to add, you know, parking piece, which was the next part of our presentation.
So unless I'm mistaken, I thought the council was unanimous in the sense of let's, let's get something there this year, the short-term solution. And then it sounds like if we really want to do this long-term, maybe what we should include in that short-term solution is the soil, soil boring now. So we have the information, and Dana's shaking her head yes.
That's exactly what I'm thinking.
Mayor, thank you, members of the council. In our budget, we, based on the information and the cost estimates that Will just provided, we do have enough funding to move forward with the short-term plan as presented here this evening, based on the budget that he drafted for twenty-twenty.
So the, Council, I'd like to find.
Comment, Mayor, I have a comment. Should have brought this up earlier. The fact that we're going, we're embarking on this project, which everybody thinks we should do, without having a clue as to if there is a problem down the road because of the contamination. I mean, isn't there like somebody, a consultant or somebody in the state government that can, we can talk to and give us some, an overall understanding of what we're dealing with here? You know, it takes time to do the soil borings, then you have to study them, you have to process them. But we don't have a clue. I don't understand why we don't understand what our jeopardy is at all. You know, is, is this something that's a good thing to do?
The, I believe we asked the city attorney before and the city attorney said we could do this in our own right without any issue. And what I was just getting ready to do is ask the council if they want to go forward with the short-term plan. Whether, I, I think the short-term plan shouldn't include the site sign or the landscaping just to get the gravel down so we can use it. But as part of that process, we do the soil boring so that you get the information necessary for the long-term vision as to what we're dealing with. And so I wanted to get the council, is there some consensus on taking that approach? Let me start here, Deb?
Yeah, I'm in agreement. I think we should find out what we got going on and I think we should do that sooner rather than later.
What about the landscaping and the site sign for the temporary, just to cut costs down?
I'm agnostic about it.
Mayor, members of the council, we actually have a few more slides to get through that speak specifically for signage. And if you recall, part of our, I don't want to steal John's thunder here, but part of our conversation is creating an awareness and a connection to downtown because this is.
Oh, got it, so you want the sign.
And so there's some signage with the farmer's market and we wanted to do some promoting and marketing classic car shows and get people connected to the site so they feel more connected to downtown and there's an awareness. So Mayor, members of council, I don't obviously want to tell you how to vote or what to do, but I think if you can reserve the signage after we get to those slides, before you make any decisions or give direction, that I think that would be.
I, I think she just told us to wait. And I, I'm fine, I'm fine with that. That was a very polite way of doing it, but. Okay, yes, well, wait. Counselor, without objection, let's, let's continue on and then we can have a quick discussion at the end. John, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. So one of the things that certainly is an important thing with any project, whether it's an interior project or a site project, is wayfinding. And really, from a design side of things, wayfinding is really the way we orient ourselves to our environment. We, you know, back in the old days when we didn't have phones, how to navigate places was a lot about brand marketing and stuff like that. So there's some basic wayfinding principles, really orientation. It's really how you attempt to figure out where you are in, in relative to other objects and things in your environment. Route decision, which is really how do I decide which way I'm going to go one time at a particular location? Route monitoring, is it, am I going in the right direction? Am I, is it going to my destination? And then once I get there, I know I made it okay, right? So those are kind of the basic premises that we think about when we talk about wayfinding and getting people around. So when you apply that to signage, because wayfinding isn't always about signage, it's really about visual cues. But signage is a good visual cue and a way for us to be able to orient ourselves and direct people to a destination. It can include informational signs, directional signs and identification strategies that are intuitive and easy to understand and are consistent. So it gets into a conversation about branding. And they typically include entry monuments, which you've got, you know, those obviously as you enter into the city. Municipal buildings are a great landmark for people. Most people know where their city facilities are. Community and park signage, there's some obviously with the county system that's already here in town. And then directional and parking signage. It should help visitors find their way, enhance identity and promote pedestrian movement. Signs can show us where to go, where to park and where we are. And signs can also find courage and restrict behavior, you know, parking, you know, some of your businesses, all of those types of things. So one of the things that we look at is, you know, what is kind of the current motif of signage in the downtown area? Certainly there are some branded signage around downtown right now where some of the existing parking is. The county has a brand that they have for their park trail system. You have some different identifiers in the downtown area and also some artistic signage that's down by the pavilion. Some of the other things that we looked at is what are some of the iconic structures around, you know, not only with just the pedestrian signage, but also with the, you know, the pavilion that's right down the street from us right here. So how do we take some of those into the context of what kind of signage should we be looking at? And so one of the things that we looked at is what are some simple signs? So you go to, if we're going to look at, at either a temporary signage solution or a more permanent one, there's lots of different ways to build signs. A lot of them are simple posts and wood signage, which a lot of these are, are great examples of different levels of how you can do just the basic wayfinding and pedestrian signage, all the way as simple as what Amazon does with a couple of posts and a few signs. So to whatever level of directional signage that you want to look at, we wanted to at least look at some ideas around what kind of signage could we look at? One of the criteria was, let's keep it simple. Let's base our signage solution on a simple four-by-eight module, which you could imagine would come out of a, out of a wood section with either applied graphics or a relief graphic on it, either applied or carved into the material, simple four-by-four posts supporting it. Looking at some of the branding that's already, what people identify is, you know, we took some of the design cues from the existing pavilion that people recognize as part of the downtown area. But looking at putting some symbols on it that would reflect, you know, the city logo itself would identify this as a yard, a waste drop-off site, would have an ability to have some changing content on it for whether it's the car show or whether it's the. for whether it's the car show or whether it's the, the farmer's market. And then obviously its main purpose is to direct people into the site for parking. And so this would be colors, obviously would be to be determined. This is an attempt graphically to try to pick out the city's already branded colors, but you would engage a graphic designer to be able to finalize some of those types of things. You could simplify it if, you know, you wanted, if you still like the more dynamic form, but wanted something more simplified, uh, we could certainly do something like that or even just a very basic, you know, graphic sign. So all of those are raised up off the ground, uh, so that we, one, we can maintain underneath them and two, that you can, um, uh, easily see it from the road coming from either direction, uh, coming into the site. Uh, one of the other things that we talked about is how do you then get people from that site, uh, into the downtown? There, there's no sidewalk alongside your lane right now. So obviously, most people would walk either the trail or if the road was closed, they'd walk along the road. Uh, so you might want to consider some simple pedestrian signage that might be in a similar style to, uh, the signage that you would put at the site. But directional signage can include things like just a map. Here's where you are now, here's where you're trying to get to, uh, along with some identifiers on it that would point you in the right direction. And so a couple of those might be nice to have. And so looking, trying to keep it from a simple side of things. If we were to put some, uh, monumental informational sign at, uh, the site itself, we would want to probably have some pedestrian directional sign at the trail so that as you're walking from your car, you have an easy way to identify which direction I should go and which direction is the downtown area. If you're there just, uh, for an event, it might feel a little bit, uh, easier to find your way. And then as you get into the downtown area, maybe some additional signage there that would then highlight some of the businesses and where those might be as you're walking into, uh, the downtown area. So if you think about signage in general, our initial thought is to keep it as simple as possible for that short-term solution. I think I allowed eight, ten thousand dollars to build a sign. But, you know, that should get you at least to a basic sign that puts you in the ballpark of, of getting people, uh, headed towards the downtown area. And then some additional cost for, uh, um, a small pedestrian sign that would probably take you to, uh, that number that we had in there along with some testing to, uh, on the site.
Okay. Now, can we talk? Dana says yes. So, uh, let's start with, uh, councilmember Gregory. Would you like to, uh, go first?
Uh, sure. Did some of that, uh, landscaping, was that, was, was there a, uh, significant amount of brush clearing? I know that the site is pretty well secluded and it seems that if we were to clear out a bunch of that brush, we would make it, make the site a little bit more visible, a little bit more inviting possibly, would be one question. The other question, I liked the, the concept of the simple sign, preferably. I, I think the, the sloping one is, is probably a little bit better. But I don't think we want to undersize the, 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 the public parking, the, the blue P signs. And I don't bet if we would have just a, a basic one at the roadway itself and that could just be on, on a steel post with public parking. But if you could address just those two questions, whether we can clear out the brush and, uh, have additional parking, just to, just to highlight that it's public parking?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, this is Dave Shover again. Um, just wanted to address the landscaping portion of it. Um, we have started doing some of the brush cutting and we'll doing, we'll, we'll be doing the tree trimming. It really is just tree trimming and brush removal. So, um, as our guys have had time in our schedules, we've been working on... Uh, budgeting for it and as far as out-of-pocket money, probably insignificant as far as that...
It's more cleanup than anything else. Okay, got it.
But we, at least in the short-term, um, I'm not sure what the, like, but as far as getting the site useful and open, it, it's really just our only house of work and labor to be done, so.
Got it. That, that helps clarify. Dana?
Um, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. And just to add on to that, um, where those trees are, we don't own that. So we have to get permission and we do have permission to do some regular root and base for that. But anything more significant clearing or anything that would require us to take more, more than what we've been doing now would require a conversation, which Anne is our point of contact. Anne Monkey, our Park and Recreation Director, and she's been having those conversations just to stay on top of things, so we're not delayed in waiting to, to move forward with that. Um, I also wanted to take a moment to, um, if council would allow me to respond to councilmember Gregory's question or comment about the post-parking signs, the Ps. Um, if you, we had talked about internally, do you just do that? And I, we went back to some of the conversations and notes that we had with, um, if you recall, I think last October, the business community that was here and giving us back on some of the parking solutions that we were trying to explore. And we were hearing from a number of those business owners that the P signs, that just the public parking, part of it is placement, but part of it is people aren't, um, understanding that that means that you can park there. They think it's parking, you can park here on the street, not necessarily in the lot. And so, um, we were taking into consideration some of the comments and what we were hearing. Part of council's direction at that time was go back and work with the business community and come up with some additional ideas on how we can enhance the signage in the city. So as part of the project, that's where we've taken the cue, council direction from that October discussion with the business community. We're talking about local auction sales tax and special services district and apply that here as part of this project, um, with the signage discussion.
Got it, super. Uh, can you go back to the curb sign real quick? The, uh, councilmember Gregory, is this the one you were referring to?
Yeah, that, that's the one. Just basic, but a little bit of a design to it.
All right, perfect. Thanks. Um, uh, Judy, do you want to go next? Uh, Tom, Gregory, was, was that it?
That was it. That was it. Thank you.
Yep, thanks. Uh, Judy, you want to go next?
Um, sure. I, I like the idea of putting the signs up. I don't know if we actually need a temporary sign. I think if, if we do a purpose sign now, we just upgrade as we, as we go along. And I like the idea of the directional signs, uh, throughout the, the downtown area as well and the parking trails, uh, the walking trails so that they can, you know where they are. Um, I know that one of the problems that people have said to me is they keep driving around in a circle. They don't know how to go outside that circle to find the parking. Um, I thought the, the blue Licks sign would have helped, but I guess they, they still don't understand. We definitely have to have some signs out there. They won't, they won't know to go in there. So that's, that's my thought on that. But I, I do like making sure we get this, get something done this year so that people can park when we can finally go back outside and do things.
Yep, uh, thank you. Uh, uh, Tom, vote, go ahead.
The sign, the sign issue is the most important. We found with the restaurants and the recent one or two years we were putting up signs, yes, it takes a long time to get it right because, you know, God bless these people, but they really do have a problem. Uh, you really do have to be obvious and you have to be deliberate and you cannot assume that they're gonna make any kind of mental leap. So if you want a parking lot, say, public parking in the lot. Uh, it, it has to be that, then it has to be that obvious. And it, in the, sign has, signs have to be big. Otherwise, as Judy says, people complain and they just go in circles and said, I was down there and there was no parking. And they didn't get outside the circle. So the signing is critical and I'd be in favor of getting something very vivid, very large, not that expensive, because we, we really don't know what the final product is gonna be. But public parking, you know, this example you've got is perfect, except public parking should be...
Big.
Big, not little, big. And public parking lot, you know, you got, you just gotta, do not assume that these people are gonna pick up on anything. And, uh, this is, this is experience. This is the hard experience we've had the last couple of years. And, uh, but I think the whole concept is needed, especially with the farmer's market.
Right, I think we lost it.
And where's the, you, you lost me?
Yeah, I lost you there first.
No, we got to keep going.
Uh, my microphone still says I've got sound.
Yeah, you are now.
Okay, the, the public parking is important because of the farmer's market. The, uh, you know, yard waste is, is once or twice a year, so...
Yeah, I wouldn't want to get on there.
Yeah, get that public parking out there and have more than one sign. Uh, you, you need signs in between the signs. I'm not kidding. Uh, you know, it's, assume, it's, assume that you're gonna have to just, uh, put your hand on somebody's car and lead them into the lot, because that's about what it comes down to. But, uh, otherwise, this is great. We gotta get going on it. I'm sorry we can't take the building down right away because that would really give you a lot more parking.
Yep, the, uh, thank you, Deb?
No, I've got nothing to add. They articulated it beautifully.
Yep, I, I like the idea of the arrows, the, like, behind Victoria Flats. There's no arrow that points, there's spaces back there, a simple arrow. I, I think it's self-explanatory. So, um, uh, and I'm fine, the, if this is what you're talking about, we're putting up signs and, and after hearing more on the landscaping, we want to do that in the temporary. I mean, that's fine, because Dave, to your point, the amount of dollars here is insignificant, right? Uh, and the sign probably, actually, a- after hearing this, we probably do actually need the sign to make sure that people know instead of driving by it, uh, because we're creating something that doesn't exist. So, uh, I think the consensus is, is quickly as possible, do this. The, and unless I hear objections from the council, I think what we need to do is also get soil boring ordered as soon as possible so that we have the information we need for the long-term side of this. Um, uh, but move forward as quickly as possible with the short-term, right? Get the gravel in there, get us as many spaces as you can. So, um, uh, council, any objections about the soil boring? Deb?
No.
Uh, uh, councilmembers on the phone, any objections? Uh, hearing none?
Uh, just a comment, just a comment on the soil boring, I want to go there again. What are we gonna do with the soil? We, can't somebody tell us what the soil, soil bo- bo- bo-ings are likely to find and what the, uh, decision points are gonna be depending on what we find? So just saying we're gonna get soil boarings without even talking about what the ramifications are and what the, you know, the different options will be. Uh, it seems to me we should be able to know when we're requesting so- soil boarings, uh, what we expect to find.
And I think John answered that, but John, go ahead. Would you answer the, uh, this question, please?
Uh, Mayor and Council, what we would request is what's called a phase-one environmental assessment. And what that does is it does historical research on what property is and it will also do soil boarings on site to determine what the substrate is. So to give you those answers that you're asking about.
Sure, okay.
And that will allow us to answer the question about whether or not we can pave this and, and put in whatever, uh, water control we need.
It would have all those recommendations.
Okay, uh, councilmember vote, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Yep, uh, uh, unless there's anything else, uh, one last time, any further, uh, comments or questions from the council? Yep, uh, uh, Tom, vote, any more questions, comments?
No, it's good.
Thank you. Judy, questions, comments?
No, I'm good.
All right, uh, Tom, uh, Gregory, questions, comments?
No, sir, all good.
Okay, uh, is Dana, is there anything else? Dave, anything else? Okay, at this point, can I get a, a motion from a councilmember, uh, to, uh, adjourn the workshop? And please remember, uh, we're gonna have to do roll call votes and whoever makes the motion, I need you to announce your name for, to make things, make Cindy's life a little easier. So can I get a motion to adjourn the workshop, please?
Counselor vote, I make a recommendation, a motion to adjourn this workshop.
McMillan, second.
Uh, thank you. Uh, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, uh, councilmember vote?
Aye.
Thank you, councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Uh, councilmember Black?
Aye.
Uh, councilmember McMillan?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. Uh, we are adjourned. Uh, for the public listening, it'll take us about ten minutes to get everything set up for the council meeting. As soon as we're ready to go, we'll start at six-thirty or a few minutes after. We are adjourned.